The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is October 28th, 2019, 7:00 PM. If you'll please stand for the pledge, I will have Councilman Cox lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations or public hearings. We'll go into the minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2019 special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion or any corrections to those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements to make tonight or reports?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since our last meeting, the three groups to which I am the liaison had their monthly meetings and just a couple of highlights for me.
Okay.
Board of Library Trustees, the Friends reported that they had another successful book sale this fall. They have library as planned programs right through the spring and those will be all, will be announced as they come up. And they are planning a review of library policies to do over a period of time. Conservation Commission is looking into planning a cleanup day at Paterouski. If not this fall, it might be next spring. Several members will be attending the annual conference of the Connecticut Association of Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission on Saturday, November 23rd. And Committee on Aging, the Senior Center, will be hosting its annual craft fair and quilt raffle on November 2nd and Veterans Lunch, which is a very nice event, on November 14th. They're still excited about getting the grant for the dial-a-ride vehicle and that will be ordered in 2020. And they also received another grant from the North Central Agency on Aging and that's going to help fund a number of services at the Senior Center. And that's it.
Great. Thank you for your report. Does anybody else have anything to report? I do have a few items. First of all, I would like to recognize the opening, the official opening of the new concession stand at Norton Park. The Plainville Soccer League sponsored a little grand opening on Sunday. Mr. Lee was there. State Senator Henry Martin, I attended chairperson from the Board of Ed, Hardy was there as well. This was a, an opening of their concession stand, although it has been opened over the summer, but this is sort of their official kickoff to choosing the facility. The story behind the facility goes back some 18 years or so. The soccer, the youth soccer league in town had been wanting to have some type of facility for a number of years. And they did a lot of fundraising. They, they would have events and they'd host tournaments and they would, parents would fundraise and they garnered probably about $18,000, certainly well short of what the building cost, but nonetheless, they had a sincere and serious interest in getting this facility up and running. As, as it turned out, it took a number of years to get it going, but in several communications through the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee and particularly through Town Manager Robert Lee, there were some funds available through some grants that had been designated for improvements to Norton Park, funds that were left over. And it turned out that we were able to utilize those funds to put, put up a building. There was work done by town staff to help with some of the costs. The, the interior of the facility, which includes the refrigerators and the sinks and all of the interior shelving and so forth, was purchased by the soccer, the Plainville Youth Soccer Commission. So their plan is to, of course, as they go through time and as people and organizations want to use that facility, they'll be able to use that for large gatherings. It can be used at the Plainville Balloon Fest if they would like. Not only does it have a concession stand, but there's two more additional restrooms in the back of it, which of course are always a welcome addition to the park when we have large, large events. So it was very nice on Sunday. Two, two folks that were primarily behind the, the whole project from the Plainville Youth Soccer were Edzio Capozzi and Dawn Angelillo. Dawn was the treasurer who made sure all the money they raised for that particular building was set aside and not used for anything else. And they dedicated themselves for several years to put aside the money for that. So it is really, it's a great addition to the park. They had a little kickoff, some hot chocolate. It rained and poured, of course, on Sunday. However, that doesn't, that's not daunting for soccer players. Apparently that's the type of weather they, they relish and they do play in it. But it was great to see the parents. Some of the children were there. And it certainly is wonderful that, that project came to completion and thanks, tremendous thanks to Mr. Lee for his involvement, to our town staff who also was, were deeply involved in getting it done. And it's a facility that lots of people will benefit from for many years. So it was interesting to be there. The other topic I'd like to talk about tonight is, I would like to say thank you to Councilman Carrier for his service on the town council over the past year. He has, he graciously stepped in to fill a vacancy back last, maybe September or so. So he's been with us back for a year. He was previously on the council. He has chosen not to run again in the upcoming election. He has young children. He's involved in a great many activities with his family. And I do want to personally thank you, Danny, for your time, for your, for your council. You are a great contributor to this board. My greatest hope is maybe someday you'll come back and do something. But Danny has also expressed an interest in returning to the Capital Projects Building Committee. He was a member on that committee before he came back on the council. He was, he had great, great experiences there as well. So maybe we're going to be able to take care of something, but I personally would like to thank you for your time and your contributions. And I know what it's like to have small children and try to do these things. So thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And that's it for me. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have appointments and resignations. Do we have any appointments this evening? I didn't see any. Nope. Does anybody have any that are not listed on our agenda? Nothing? Okay. We'll go through that. Next is Board of Education Liaison. Mrs. Hardy, do you have a report for us?
Deb Hardy, 17 Maria Road, Board of Ed Chair. Yes, the concession stand opening was a great experience. It was raining and pouring, like Kathy had said, but there were people there that were excited about it and explained the story to us, which was unbelievable, is how they got to where they did. So that was a good day in spite of the rain for the Board of Ed. We have Career Day on Friday, November 22nd. There was a video that was created by Deb Pickle and Sue Bradley for the PHS students. Superintendent Steve Lapage and business ed teacher Steve Michaud spoke to students to think about what career path is important to them, but then to think about how to pursue their career, ask questions from the professional past, from past people. And they decided that they brought back some students that had graduated and have been to college. And they also said that they would be available to speak to them, but they did tell them that, don't be upset if you do not reach the goal that you're going for because there may be something else in mind and there may be a detour. So don't be upset if you have to change what you originally wanted to go for in school. Student recognition lunch on another note is Friday, November 1st at J. Timothys. And that's all I really have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you for being here. All right. Robert, we're, we're back to you.
All right. I have a couple of items. The first of which I've entitled, "The Water Pollution Control Fiber Connection Bid." Recently, town staff advertised for bid to provide the necessary equipment to the treatment plant and four pump stations to allow them to communicate with each other after the fiber is installed. Two bids were received with a low bid in the amount of $99,800 submitted by Progress Engineering of Manchester, Maine. The estimated cost for this work, the estimate for the cost of this work originally was $150,000, so it's significantly under what was estimated. Progress Engineering also provided an estimate of $5,450 to provide two variable frequency drives for the Mountain View Pump Station. That pump station used to have those variable frequency drives, which saves power, but because of some issues that came up, they, because of lack of funds, they, they cut that, you know, they changed it back into just on and off switches. So they're looking to do that at the same time. Town staff is recommending the acceptance of this alternate for a total award of $105,250. There is an item on their new business regarding this recommendation to award the contract to Progress Engineering in the amount of $105,250 to make four pump stations and the treatment plant ready for, to connect to the town's fiber optic system. The total estimated cost for the fiber project was originally $711,878. In addition to the pump station equipment coming in under estimate, the make-ready portion of the project also appears to be coming in under the original estimate as well by approximately $89,000. Sources of revenue for the project include $200,000 from the capital improvement budget, which had already been budgeted and appropriated, $250,000 from the sewer fund, and $24,260 from the state E-rate reimbursement. The remaining amount, which at the, as part of the original estimate, which was $237,616, is yet to be finalized. However, given the savings in the make-ready and the equipment for the pump stations, this amount could eventually be reduced to $103,866. So, so at least that project is going in the right direction in terms of the original estimate is concerned.
That's good news.
Yes. The other item I have is the abandonment of a portion of Corporate Avenue. In January of this year, the town council approved the abandonment of a portion of Corporate Avenue in order to allow for the development of a parcel of land located along Northwest, Northwest Drive owned by FCP-2 LLC. The owner is requesting the abandonment of another small parcel in order to provide for a potential tenant. The parcel consists of 1,800 square feet. There is an item on their new business regarding this request as well. I also have some information with regards to leaf collection, which has already begun. The roadways department led by Dominic Moschini will be rotating through Plainville, vacuuming up the leaves. Two or three crews will collect the leaves, including weekends as well. Residents are requested to place their leaves at the edge of the road outside of the travel portion, as well as avoiding placing on the sidewalks. Leaves will be collected through the first week of December, whether permitting. Information regarding leaf collection can be found on the town website. I also wanted to notice that I do plan on, I have scheduled two, what I call Town Manager conversations. The first is, which will be held at the Plainville Library. The first one will be held on November 14th, which is a Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And my guest that evening will be Superintendent of Schools Steve Lapage. So the two of us will be there for a couple of hours. If anybody wants to stop in and have a conversation about any items of interest to them, we can certainly have more in-depth discussions at these, at these meetings, at these conversations. I've also scheduled another one for December 4th, which is a Wednesday, again, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the library. My guest that evening will be Chief Matthew Catania. So the two of us will be there to, to meet people who, if anybody who's interested in attending. I'm also planning one for January, which I'm trying to finalize the date as far as that's concerned. With regards to, and we'll be putting out some press releases and some other information so that more people will be aware of this opportunity should they want to take them, take advantage of that. So with regards to the financial dashboard, and this is through the first quarter, September 30th. As far as the expenditures are concerned, although they're running a little bit higher on a percentage basis than previous years, I've been insured by town staff that that really has to do with the timing of the payment of, you know, there's nothing that's really running out of, out of, out of the ordinary as far as the budget is concerned. Police overtime is, is, is running, you know, as, as it was in previous years. It certainly justifies the reason for the increase in the police overtime account as part of the current year's budget. Roadways overtime is, is, not, not the snow overtime, but the regular overtime is up as well because of the, the, roadways did a lot more work with regards to preparing for the, for the road bond project. Other than that, those, any of those expenditures on the first page are, are, you know, as expected. We are, you know, looking at the recycling tonnages and what you'll see of the first quarter, we've, we've used 326 tons have gone through, which is a little bit less than the, what we anticipated. We budgeted 1,600 tons for the, for the first, for the year, about 400, you know, a month, excuse me, 400 a quarter. So we're running a little bit under. You know, unfortunately, they, you know, we budgeted a tonnage that ended up coming, you know, on a per-ton basis, it came in higher than what we anticipated. So I expect that we'll go over in, in budget as far as that number is concerned, but perhaps not as far as the tonnages are concerned. On the revenue side, we're, we're tracking both on all revenues and, and current taxes, slightly higher than previous years. We've collected almost 44, 44.6% of our overall revenues received to date. We have not received any ECS revenues. The first ECS payment is supposed to be made this week, which is 25% of hopefully somewhere in the vicinity of, you know, a total of 20, $10 million we get, you know, with regards to ECS. So we'll begin to receive that hopefully this week. Current taxes, we're running at 57%, which is pretty much tracking with what, what we have in the last two years. Fund balance, nothing changed from the last, from the last report. With respect to recreation, Robertson Airport, water pollution control, and the Plainville Library expenditures, pretty much nothing unusual with respect to that. We're still carrying a fund balance in the Robertson Airport fund of a little bit over Major projects report. Project Improvement Funds, which is where the park improvements, including the new concession stand came out, is pretty much 100% complete. So we'll be closing that, you know, that project's been closed as of September 30th. We'll be taking this out off of the report for the next report. Road Bond, we still, you know, have some money left in the first road bond. Phosphorus removal project is running a little bit ahead of schedule with respect to completion. And I've been assured by the Water Pollution Control Director, as well as the, the consultants that were running, you know, a little bit below budget as far as the overall project is concerned. And the same goes for Wheeler School. It's running a little bit ahead of schedule and is running under budget as well. Parking Lot Project, Northwest Drive Rehabilitation, and, you know, those are pretty, those projects are pretty much complete as well. So that's all I have to report on, certainly available to answer any questions you may have for me. I do not have any happenings for this evening. Scott hasn't returned.
No happenings?
Scott hasn't returned for me.
Scott's not happening tonight?
He's not hap, well, he may be happening, but not here.
Not here? Okay. Okay. That's, that's fine. All right. Thank you for your report. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the Town Manager regarding the items on his report? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comments. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody, and I don't have a sign-up sheet, so we will just go forward from here. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? John?
John Kissel, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. Good evening, Town Council.
Hello.
Did it to me again first. I'm going to talk about the trail tonight. I kind of had a talk with the Town Manager a while back at one of the fireside chats and said, we're beating that thing to death. So I told him I back off, but too much stuff is happening with that. So, you know, this trail, we have people from the state come in, have known nothing about our town, don't care about our town. And I can say that's a fact because when they first started, they wanted to put the trail in front of people's front yard and go through our nature park. So these people don't care about us. And now they want to go in people's backyards, they want to go up Pier Street, they want to go up Broad Street, they want to go through our park. Now, I don't know if any of you have seen the traffic jams we have at Broad Street, Washington, and South Washington every day. If you have a crosswalk there with these people pushing a button every two minutes or something, you'll be back down to Southington and the other way down to 72, then to East Broad Street and Whiting Street. It's just ridiculous. And, and Pier Street is just out of the question. But I want to go to another part two now in the park. I don't know if any of you have seen the deed from Charles and Elizabeth Norton dated August 8th, 1928, a warranty deed. I want to read one of the sections from it. Also conditioned that the Town of Plainville shall restore within one year after the acceptance of this deed, a portion of the canal lying within the boundaries herein before stated, at least 600 feet in length, in order that the work of beautifying said land as a park shall have a reasonably prompt beginning. Now, I know the Nortons aren't alive, but if they were, I'm pretty sure that they would be totally against anything with what they want to do to the other part of the canal and the tow path. This is ridiculous. And this council has the authority to stop this stuff. If the state wants to build something on their roads and their land, it's fine, but you stop them from going through the nature park. This council should stop them from going through our property, our streets. It's, it's completely ridiculous. I'm going to put one on you people. How many up there, I want to show hands, are against this trail? No hands, that means you're all in favor. So everybody knows this council's in favor of that right now. I'd like to see you change your minds. Some of you.
He's done.
You are?
I have something to say.
When you're finished, which is in six seconds, if you keep to the time.
Okay. Well, to change the subject too, I know we don't have a meeting until November 18th. I'll have a topic for our brand-new town council. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Mazzarco.
Mr. Kissel, you did ask us a yes or no question and I'm not going to answer it like that. I'm in favor of a trail through town, but I think what you're trying to do is back us into a corner that we are in favor of this specific of going through backyards. Clearly, I am not in favor of going through anyone's backyard. I just want to make sure that you're clear that I do support the trail, but I do not support.
Well, I'm in favor of trails like they have through Farmington, Unionville, and Burlington, you know, stuff like that. That's a trail. This is not a trail through Pier Street and Broad Street and somebody's backyards. It's, it's ridiculous. It doesn't even make sense. It's stupidity. These guys shouldn't even be proposing that to our town. They're destroying our town.
Okay. Thank you. The only final comment I would make to that is that we have not seen the final version of this trail yet. It is still being worked on. You haven't seen the final version, John. I mean, I know this is a proposed conceptual vision of what it might be. It could look different. So until we see the final outcome of all the work that's going to be done on this, at this point, I'm in favor of it. And if there is something materially different when I see it in its, in the end result, then, then I'll talk about that.
Just to correct one thing as well, the, the current alignment is not going through anyone's backyard. Okay? It's not going through anyone's backyard.
Okay.
It's different than through somebody's backyard.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a little historic, historical thing that some people may not be aware of, and I think this is a good thing to bring up, is that actually a portion of the canal was restored in the early 1970s. The portion when you first walk in to the right, actually it was a major event. Ruth Hummel was, led the, led that project. It was a major project. It was, you know, it was dredged. And actually, they even cleared about 10 feet width on one side to simulate a tow path, what the tow path would have looked like, which was 10 feet according to the specifications. So I just wanted people to be aware that there was a restoration done in the early 1970s.
Thank you, Rose Mary. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? Mr. Edman.
I shouldn't be here tonight because I'm in a lot of pain, but what I have to say I feel is very important. Edman, Joel Edman, 63 Halleberry Lane, no rail, no trail, and no thank you. Norton Park, our wonderful local town park, will soon be expected to host yet another activity if the stupid design for the Gap Trail succeeds the approval process, which I continue to hope our, our leaders will come to their common senses and they give up on this horrible, negatively impacting idea to promote commercial activity to just a few places in downtown Plainville for just a few people. I foresee Norton Park as becoming more of a state or a national park and ride. Park and ride with rails to trails, but no, never rails slicing through it. Certainly, the railroad did not go through it after it replaced the old Plainville Canal. It's been said that 200,000 or more people would be using the trail for, per year. I doubt that many, but in the meantime, in the forever future, Plainville taxpayers will be on the hook for the cost of police patrolling, maintenance, liability, repair, insurance, replacement, maybe some lighting, and safety. With the coming of e-bikes, e-scooters, and AMVs, no AMVs, that's what I'm abbreviating for, air mobility vehicles. It's coming with technology. Hackers and bikers will not only have to deal with them, but also falling limbs, animal attacks, very possibly of humans, human attacks, as that has already happened many times on other parts of the trail. Another thought that I have, the renaming it a greenway. I don't adhere to that much green as alignment to see invading through quiet neighborhoods, compromising many streets, bypassing a stinky Scott Swamp, and hazardous waste buried under our old town landfill. I once said that if it smells like cologne, leave it alone. People are getting through town just fine on their well-maintained, line-stripe roads and sidewalks. Leave it alone. Okay. Maybe next time.
Okay.
Thank you. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Dave?
Dave Albert, 56 Halleberry Lane. I wanted to thank the town council for their work they've done last year. Don't always agree with what you do, but I, I 100% convinced that your hearts are there. So thanks for the time. The trail, if anyone went down Pier Street this last week, the condos were all being paved. We just said, there's, there's no way you're putting a trail down there. There's no possible way. And again, I've been pretty consistent with my opposition to. And again, I've been pretty consistent with my opposition to the trail going through Norton Park, even though I do use the trail, have used it. I just don't think that it should go through Norton Park. What is the rate on the percentage increase for the new town contract that was just signed?
Which contract are you speaking about?
I thought there was a town contract that was just signed for the staff?
A union contract?
Yeah.
Oh. It's a three-year contract.
Okay.
It's a three years.
Yeah.
And I have to get to where it is.
Here it is.
In my package. Sorry, this takes a second.
I request the chair to please stop the clock.
Yeah, that's what we want. Are you just looking for the annual salary increase? Is that what you want?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. First year is 2%, second year is 2.25%, third year is 2.25%.
Has the Board of Ed contract with the teachers been signed?
I don't have the final teacher's contract. It has been finished and it has been finalized, but I don't have that number in front of me.
Do you have a rough percentage of what that will be?
We can get that for you.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
We can get that. I don't wanna speak. I saw the contract, and I know that it was ratified by the teachers, I believe. I don't think we've gotten it to vote on yet, have we, Robert?
It has come to the council, it has not yet.
We haven't seen it yet, so we should get, the next council will be looking at that to ratify it.
Okay.
When it's formally submitted to the council, you have 30 days to take action. For or against, or not at all.
All right.
Okay, I'll be patient. That'll be what, another month, maybe?
Well, we hope so.
I think so, that should be...
Okay. Thank you. All right. Turn the clock back on, I'm off. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else?
If I close it out?
Yes, sir.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. I'd like to talk about property tax and taxation in general tonight. There are several towns and cities in Connecticut that have recently held the line on tax increases. Plainville is not one of them, unfortunately. And, you know, people in other towns, and hopefully this town soon, are going to realize we're approaching a place where paying our taxes is gonna be very difficult and very burdensome to many people. I have a neighbor who loves living in the town, but has voiced to me that since he moved into the town, he's paying twice as much property tax as, I don't know, 15 or so years ago. And right now, we have, I guess we're on the referendum, we're going to be voting on an additional $5 million for road construction. We just went at $14.3 million into debt with the school reconstruction and the parking lot. I mean, unfortunately, there are a lot of voters that came out, and somehow, they had the idea placed in their minds that $14.3 million was somehow free money that we didn't have to pay back. That's unfortunate, and I would like to see us pay down the town debt substantially before we go $5 million further into bonding debt. And I hope the voters consider this, you know, come this next Tuesday. I mean, the Board of Education especially, they need to start thinking about reining in their budgets. I mean, normally, we have 5% people come out and vote on the budget in April. This year, somehow, 7% came out, and an extra 2% voted down the Board of Education budget. And then they shamelessly, no, shamelessly manipulatedly used the middle school sports as their way of sticking it to the people. They allowed a lot of parents to come out and be heroes to their children and save the sports at the middle school. But, I mean, they did that a few years ago with cheerleading, and now they do it this time around. You know, I mean, it's absolutely shameless to look, that's where, you know, find something that's gonna hurt people, threaten them to take it away as a way to manipulate them to pass their budget. I mean, it worked. We had, what, 10, 11, 12% come out, which is outstanding for this town. And they had a lot of parents be heroes in their children's eyes, too.
Thank you, Carol. Your time has expired, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you.
Could you wrap up your thoughts? You have another second or two to wrap up if you need to?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Spencer spoke about the $5 million road bond, and we need to explain that a little bit. I will explain it, and then Robert Lee is going to expand on that. The road bond, this is the second road bond issue that we are asking the voters to support for $5 million, and it is part of our long-term capital budget. But the town council, with the advice of our finance director and our town manager, has devised a plan where as old debt retires, meaning the old debt is falling off, we are going to be able to fill some of that space with things such as the road bond. And we also are going to fill it with two new fire trucks that we recently had approved back in June for the purchase of fire equipment. So what's happening is that as the debt falls off, instead of doing else with it, we are filling those monies with current projects that we need to get done, one of which is a road bond, the other one is the purchase of the two new pieces of fire apparatus. Mr. Lee, can you add to that, if there's something I'm leaving off?
The debt service lineup, which includes school construction and the road bond and, you know, other items as well, has held at the same level for probably the last five or six years now. It has not increased. So, you know, what you said is exactly true. I think most people understand that it's not free, it's just that the debt is being paid off and is being replaced by new debt. And I don't think anybody can, well, I shouldn't say, very few people could probably argue that the fixing up of the roads in town is needed. What we're talking about as far as this next road bond is roads that hadn't been paved in 25 to 30 years. They really outlast their useful life, and if we wait much longer, it's gonna cost a lot more to fix them because they'll get a lot worse than they are right now. So the question becomes, you know, when's the best time to do the road bond? We believe it is now because of the significant amount of debt that's dropping off. And, you know, so even with the Wheeler School Project, even with the high school parking lot project, even with the first road bond, and even with the second road bond, that lineup has not increased over that period of time, which I think falls right in line with good planning from a financial standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish, just thank you for that. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne?
Sure.
We're doing a lot of...
You're done.
No, you're done, Joanne, you're done.
Boy, you don't wanna hear me, do you?
This is kinda like the Gong Show, remember that?
I'm gonna talk anyway.
Remember that?
Quick.
You really like me, and I love you guys. I'd love you more if you were for the trail, but you're not, obviously. Already, you're spending $4 million on the design, and yet, you're waiting for the design. They wouldn't be spending $4 million on the design if they weren't pretty sure that it was gonna be alignment C. They decided that two, three years ago. I was there at that meeting. Anyway, Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. Of course, for the record, Carol, I strongly oppose alignment C and any other alignment that would negatively impact Pearon Road, Pier Street, Broad Street, Hemingway, into the park. We don't need hordes of people in the park, or even a few extra people in the park. It's already destroyed, as far as I'm concerned. It is not a serene park anymore. And of course, the Mule Hall Trail, which desecrated, is a shame. The Historic Society, I'm sure, does not want the Mule Hall Trail touched. I don't care you're talking about restoring it and all this and that. It should be left alone. It is hallowed ground. Anyway, there is a report out there. This is all back to the trail, we're still on the trail, on the trail. There's a wonderful song called "On the Trail." There's a report out there. Unfortunately, Roberta Lauria has it. She's not here tonight, unfortunately. And whereas there's 69% of people, of the people that do not, do not, do not want the trail, because it's not on a railroad, inactive railroad bed. It's intrusive and invasive the way it is already being designed. So it's, we don't need it, we don't want it. And that report was backed up by an actuary service, so it's a very true report. And it just seems that you're just, where do you people stand on this? I mean, why should I vote for you if you're for the trail? Why? Why should I vote for you? I don't want it. It's gonna cost, it's not only dangerous, can be dangerous, could be dangerous, but it's gonna cost the taxpayers so much money. If people would only think about what it's gonna cost. It's costing us money right now because the state and the federal government, the state has funded parts of it already. We're having to pay for that, and then, once it's put through Plainville, then we're gonna have to pay for maintenance, repair, and police patrol, and all the other things that my brother mentioned.
Can you wrap up, Joanne?
Repeat that again. Okay, all right. Winding up...
Thank you.
That's it.
Oh, okay.
That's it. So...
Okay.
Think about it. I got other things I want to talk about.
Does anybody else have anything to say? Anybody else who has not previously spoken wish to speak tonight? Nicole?
I just have a couple, Nicole Palmieri, 20 Julie Road. I just have a couple things to add for the Board of Ed. Next Thursday, the 7th, we are having a parent advisory committee meeting. It's the first one. Steve LaPage put together the committee. Do you have administrators, Board of Ed members, parents, teachers, all come together and talk about the goals of the school and how we would like to move forward? That's happening next Thursday. On November 9th, there is a 5K to support middle school sports. It's at 9:30 in the morning. It's $25 for adults to either do the 5K or walk, and it's $15 for the kids. You can also do a sponsorship, if you'd like, if you are a local business. And Veterans Day on November 11th, the schools will be open, and it's a day filled with ceremonies and history on Veterans Day. So, that's it. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. The first thing I'm talking about, I'm talking about the trail. I'm bringing up the old industry school first, and the reason I'm bringing that up is before the design was finally made, we had pictures, layouts, of how this project was gonna turn out. I was apprehensive, I was one that was kind of against the whole subject, but anyway, that's the way it is. But times now, I go by, and they did a pretty nice job. What's my point is sometimes what you think and what really does come out are two different things. So I'll leave it at that. Now, with that said, we're talking about the final design for this trail. Are we gonna be able to see, is there gonna be a public hearing, or some sort of meeting for residents to see the pictures? And I emphasize this, not an aerial view, pictures of what this is going to look like. I mean, I get some, I'll be quite frank, I get confused by all of this because you almost get the interpretation or the feeling that this trail is going over somebody's yard. And then I'm hearing, no, it's not going over somebody's yard. So maybe these, those type of pictures, the final plan, will clear some of that up. Now, with that said, the town council, I'm not asking for a vote from anybody from the town council right now, but let's go on the assumption, the assumption that all you folks are for it. You take a look at the, and this is confusion on my part, you take a look at the plans, the way it's been laid out, you listen to people, does that mean that the town council possibly could make a change, or is this already been set in concrete? And I'm not trying to pin you into the council into a corner, but nobody, myself, people in this room, you folks, you don't know what the final verdict is, yet everybody seems to say we're going in that direction, and almost, and I'm sorry, this I'm gonna be a little blunt on, it almost seems like it's arm-twisting.
Well, the council will see the final renderings, and the council will have public information sessions to see those final renderings. And if folks on the council have some issues with that proposed, and I'm not gonna say final, I will say proposed, iteration of that trail, of course, it can be changed.
So the bottom line is, and again, I'm not holding anybody's hands to the fire, the bottom is, the bottom line would be that if the plan was not appropriate, the possibility is that the town of Plainville would say, "No, we don't want it." Is that possible?
I think that there may be portions of it that may be different than what we think are gonna look like now. As far as the entire plan being scrapped, I couldn't go that far. There could be changes to it, of course, but I don't, I could not say that it's entirely going to go away. That's kind of a lot to ask at this point.
All right. But again, I'm not trying to confront, all I'm asking is, is there a possibility, or is there a possibility that this trail could be stopped? By vote of...
You know what, Mr. Frangos? This is the last meeting of this group of people, and there's gonna be a new council sitting up here. I'm not trying to dodge your question, but there may be different people up here after November 5th, and that would be appropriate for that group of people. Right now, it's too early to tell. It's far from being completed, far from being completed.
Fair enough, and good luck to you all.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Still a few out there that have been quiet. Okay. Thank you all for your comments. I will close the public comment section, and I will move on to new business. Okay, we have a few items here to take care of tonight. Item number one, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2020-02 WPC Plant and Pump Station Fiber Connection Bid to Progress Engineering LLC, Manchester, Maine, in the amount of $105,000, or $105,250,000.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to ratify the Town Hall Clerical Library Dispatch Employees Local 1303-472 of Council Number Four, AFS CME Collective Bargaining Agreement for the term July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, please.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
I was just trying to lighten the load on you there.
That's all right, I'm having fun over here.
All right, go ahead.
Never know, it could be the last ones. Motion to approve the abandonment of a portion of Corporate Avenue, equivalent of 1,800 square feet, as depicted in the exhibit map revised 10/16/2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Other discussions of interest. Mr. Lee, do you have anything else?
Just one item. The, we have, the new Parks Recreation Director, Courtney Hewitt, has started. She began on Tuesday. She's from Canton, and we look forward to her contribution to, you know, her position. I think she'll be a great addition to the town, and I think she's following in the footsteps of a very strong former Parks and Rec Director and a very good program that's in place. So, we're looking forward to her moving and advancing, and with some, perhaps some new ideas as well. So, just wanted to let people know that. Feel free to stop in and see her, and introduce yourself, and goes for any residents as well. Sure should be glad to meet you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? I just have two items that I'd like to mention before we, before I say congratulate, good luck. You haven't won yet, but good luck to all who are running. I know that running in political campaigns is a challenge, but you are to be commended for volunteering to step up to this job. It is certainly not easy, and I wish you all well. But I do have a couple of items that I would like to discuss before we close. The first one is in regard to the Pumpkin Fest. I would like to thank all the volunteers, the town staff, anybody that was involved in the Pumpkin Fest. Made it a great success. We, again, were blessed with perfect weather. We had a large turnout. All the vendors had a, were very successful. The food trucks did well. The giant, we had two giant pumpkins, so that was kind of fun to have two of them. Usually, it's just one, but two were fun. And I do want to thank, Mr. Lee, I want to thank Police Chief Katania. I want to thank the Buildings and Grounds Crew. I want to thank the Police Department. I want to thank the Roadways Crew for everything that they do. There's a lot that goes on that day. And anything that they are asked to help with, it's done cheerfully and promptly, and they are, they've always been very responsive. So please, pass on my thanks for all the help that they've given. And thanks to all the volunteers. These big events don't happen without volunteers, a lot of community support. It's a lot of fun, but there's a lot of work that goes into it. So again, personal thanks to everybody involved. Joanne, we can talk when I'm finished. When I'm done. I still have more to say.
Hey, I didn't know if I would be allowed to.
We'll see. We'll see. Another topic that I'd like to talk about is, and it was mentioned tonight by Ms. Palmieri, is the Turkey Trot and Thanks for Giving 5K Run. That's going to happen in November. And it says in a flyer that somebody gave to me, because I don't have children in the school, I don't get these things. It says, "For 2020, the programs have been eliminated due to budget cuts at the middle school." And having gone through some of my notes from our budget discussions, the amount that was needed for the middle school sports was $12,000. We had, after the budget was approved, or during the budget approval process, heard from the state of Connecticut that we were going to get an additional $16,000 in ECS money. And there was a discussion, I had a discussion with the Town Manager and the then Superintendent Brauma about moving that, those funds forward to the Board of Education. This council also talked about that back in June. And the council agreed that, were we to receive those funds, that we would, we would agree to forward that for the middle school sports. Now, this council's going to change, as I said. However, I still remain firm in the fact that if the monies do come in and the ECS money comes to the town, which is more than we had included in our budget, I would certainly be in favor of forwarding that for the middle school sports programs. I understand, as Mr. Lee said, we have not gotten our first ECS payment yet. They come in increments, we don't get it all at one time. We should be hearing sometime within this week, or perhaps next week, whether in fact we are going to be getting that. But that was the information we received in June, and it was communicated to the Board of Ed that we would do that. So, I think these events are nice. I think getting parents and, you know, family members involved in things is never a bad thing. But the council did say that they would fund the middle school sports once that extra money was forwarded to the town. So, there has been some chatter on social media about this, and I just want to be clear that this is what this current council said they would do if that money came through. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else? We do not have an executive session tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course not, thank you very much.
Joanne had something to say.
Oh, Joanne, I'm sorry, please step up. I don't, I didn't mean to not let you speak. Just for the benefit of these events that you put on. I know we, the taxpayers pay for part of these events as they are put on, you know, for insurance and buildings and grounds cleanup, and so on, so forth. So, I read something in the paper, I don't know which one, but that it was fun for all ages. Well, speaking for somebody that can't walk too well, maybe I will again if I ever get this operation over with. However, it wasn't for all, certainly, any of these, outside of Wings and Wheels, where I know they have golf carts, these events are not easy for people that are of an age, or infirmed, or injured, or can't walk, or are fairly, you know, not with it. It would be nice to have a couple of golf carts on hand. I can't understand, for all the money that's made, why there can't be a couple of golf carts to move people. It's not an unreasonable request. And the more, I've suggested it to the event heads, and when I did say something back, I'll give Saunders credit. I said something back at the first Wings and Wheels. I said, "You got people walking in from a dusty field, people of an age." I think it'd be a good idea if you got some more golf carts. And he did go out and get more golf carts. Okay. So, just a word to the wise. Thank you. But when the press says that, writes it up... So you want the town to buy more, you want the town to buy more golf carts? Well, rent them from the golf course or something. What's two or three? All right. Just to move people up and down. Well, I'll pass that on to the organizers, I truly will. I'll pass it on. Okay, thanks, Joanne.